All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order for the board of selectmen at 9:14. Do I, could I have a roll call, please?
Just six and Duranian present.
Veronica Cal present. Joe Schenk is absent, it appears, and we have Russ Perry here with us as well. All right, our agenda for today, I want to first announce that the meeting is being recorded. It will be, it's on the Al right now, so if you're online, you can watch through Zoom. It will also be posted to the YouTube after the fact, and it is not live on Channel 9. Are there any additions or deletions?
They don't have anything.
I don't have anything. Ross, do you? All right, no additions or deletions. What we're going to do is move down to 5.1 ARPA projects. We have a few other things on our agenda, but we have with us today Jennifer Thompson, and I see Nicole Figurito, did I say that correctly, on as well. They are COVID consultants and are going to be presenting a little brief overview of the ARPA program for us. So welcome, Jennifer. Sorry, I'm in a mask. I hope everybody can hear me okay. So Jennifer, I'm going to turn it over to you, if that's okay.
That sounds great. Thank you, and thank you so much for having, having us. So my name is Jennifer Thompson, and I'm one of the partners with Capital Strategic Solutions. Joining me in the background is, as you said, Nicole Figurito. Very good job pronouncing her name, by the way. And our third partner, Michael Tassino Jr., who does have to jump off in about 45 minutes. But we just wanted to do a brief overview on ARPA for you. I will go pretty quickly through the beginning because I know you already discussed this, I think, at one of your former meetings, but just, just for folks that might be watching in the background on Zoom or at home, or will watch this later on your cable broadcast. We just want to give a brief background, and then we can talk some more about it. So I'm gonna, so it doesn't look like it's letting me share my screen.
Okay, I, I can let, let you do that. Hold on one moment, please.
Great.
Jennifer, okay. I have made you co-host, so now you can share.
Thank you so much. So while I'm doing that, we've been helping the town up until this point with your cares and FEMA reimbursements, and are here to let you know how we can help you out with ARPA. We are working with about 10 other cities and towns on their ARPA funds just to provide support whenever it's needed for municipalities. As you know, there's no additional staff that you have on board to help you with this, so we try to help fill the gaps as little or as much as you need. And then when you don't need us anymore, we, we go away. So this is a presentation on those ARPA funds. So as most of you know, the American Rescue Plan Act, which is known as ARPA, was signed into law on March 11th in 2021, and it created the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, which is what we'll talk about today. And that's referred to often as CLFRF. The federal government loves to use acronyms. So if you hear people say CLFRF, that's the same as ARPA. The intention is to provide support to state, local, and tribal governments in responding to the impacts of COVID-19, and as well as efforts to help contain COVID-19. You probably already know that Townsend is eligible to receive just over 2.8 million in ARPA funds. So there are four main uses that's spelled out in the legislation in terms of what a local government can use ARPA funding for. The first is to respond to the public health emergency or its negative impacts. Those type of things include assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits, or aid to the impacted industries which were hit the hardest, such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. And in the forthcoming slides, I'll give a few examples of each of these. The second is to respond to the workers that performed essential work during the COVID-19 pandemic and during the, during that health, public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers. Talk about that a little bit more in a future slide as well. The third category is for the provision of government services to the extent that the reduction in revenue due to COVID-19 collected in the most recent full fiscal year prior to the emergency. So it looks at what your revenue was prior to the pandemic, and then looks at what it actually was, and there's an assumption that, that reduction in revenues that you may have experienced as a town was due to the pandemic. So they allow you to use that for some general government services, which we'll talk about. And the last category is to make necessary investments in water, sewer, and broadband. There are two very not, very specific uses that is spelled out that you're not allowed to use the ARPA funding for. The first is you can't deposit it into any pension fund. And the second is that you can't use it to directly or indirectly offset a reduction in the net tax revenue from any state or territory resulting from a change in law, regulation, or administrative interpretation. So just to give some examples of the eligible projects from some of those categories, and these are just examples, there's a pretty long list and a long document that you can go through to kind of look at what's eligible, and we can certainly help you with that. We've been helping other cities and towns determine whether or not proposed projects are eligible for the ARPA funding. But those public health and economic impact projects are likely exactly what you think they would be. So things like vaccination efforts, monitoring COVID-19, contract tracing, personal protective equipment for your first responders and folks that are dealing with the public, and then also support for vulnerable populations to help them access medical and public health services for both immediate COVID needs and those long-term COVID needs that we're seeing on the healthcare side. Also, it continues to support prevent and mitigation in your public facilities, congregate, and healthcare settings. Very similar to what you saw with the cares and FEMA funding. Payroll and benefits for public safety and public health staff. The caveat there is those folks have to, and if they're going to be funded through this category, at least 50% of their time has to be spent on COVID-19-related activities. Improvement to public health, and then that economic assistance to populations that have a demonstrated economic hardship from the pandemic. And there's a lot of programs that kind of fall into that category as well. The second category is the premium pay for essential workers. So this applies to employees that had the regular in-person interactions or regular physical handling of items that were also handled by others. So folks that were really on the front line during the pandemic, and were not, you know, were not able to telework, folks that were, that teleworked or worked remotely, are not eligible for this premium pay. It's intended for the workers, like I said, that were needed to maintain your continuity of operations, your continuity of government in those critical infrastructure areas like healthcare, public health, public safety, childcare, education, sanitation, transportation, and food services. And there are limits on what, on what these folks can be paid, paid under this premium pay category. The third category is that revenue loss, and this really is a category that allows you to fund some things that aren't in the other category if you've experienced a revenue loss when you compare your numbers to what they were the first fiscal year before the pandemic. So there's a formula that is used by every, every municipality, and it, you calculate your general revenue, which is the majority of the revenue that the town receives, but it excludes a few things like federal funding and grants, any sort of refunds or corrections, and proceeds from issuance or debt or sale of investments, as well as income generated by utilities. So if you had a water utility, if you had, you know, some towns, you know, run their own electric company, those type of things, those, those are removed when you do the formula. The revenue loss is calculated at four points in time, as of the end of last calendar year. It'll be done again at the end of this calendar year, and then also in 2022 and 2023 to calculate the impacts. So just very briefly, this is, this is how the formula works. You come up with that base revenue that we talked about, which is the fiscal year right before the pandemic. Then you add what's called a counterfactual revenue, which is either based on a specific number that's given in the calculation, or you can use your three, your average of three years prior to, leading up to fiscal year 19, whichever is highest. So then you, that creates what your revenue in theory would have been if the pandemic had not occurred. And then you compare that to your actual revenue in calendar year 20, and then you come up with what is your estimated revenue loss for that calendar year, and that's what you're initially allowed to spend in that, in that category. And that's a lot of words and a lot of municipal finance. Don't worry too much about it. If, you know, if we get to that point that that's a bucket that the town would like to use, we've already calculated revenue in other towns, and we can certainly help you with that as well. So some of the examples that you can use in that category, as I mentioned, it's more of a catch-all. You have some more leeway in terms of what you can use because it's everything that's, falls under that general government services. So primarily what you would have, you would fund through your budget had the pandemic not occurred. So you can use it, for example, for things like maintenance or pay-as-you-go funding for building of infrastructure, including roads. You can use it for modernizing your technology and cybersecurity. You can certainly use it for health services, environmental remediation, school or educational services, and then police, fire, and other public safety services. And there's other, there's other things that can fall into this category because it is a very general category. Things that are ineligible in that general government, they do spell out some very specific things that wouldn't be eligible, and that's, you can't use it to pay, pay debt, so you can't pay it for financial indebtedness for any money that's borrowed. You also can't use it to pay a settlement agreement, judgment, consent decree, and those type of things. And you can't use it to replenish your financial reserves. So you can't take that money and put it in your stabilization fund, which is, you know, your rainy day fund or reserve funds. And then the final category are those investments in infrastructure. So it specifies water, sewer, and broadband. The water and sewer projects, those are aligned with eligibility that's spelled out in the EPA's Clean Water State Revolving Fund and Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. Those spell out exactly the type of projects that would be eligible. If you do choose to do those type of projects, road work that's associated with the project can be used. Stormwater is also eligible if it has a water quality benefit. And then the broadband, there's some requirements that you have to meet or exceed certain download speeds, and also that the broadband expansion or work would focus on unserved or underserved areas of your town. So your next steps for Townsend, I know you've talked about a lot of what I probably just talked about at one of your previous meetings. The next step is for the select board to vote and decide on which projects that you'd like to fund through ARPA. Different cities and towns are using different models. I think the one that you've talked about using is that the department heads and the town administrator will formulate a potential list of projects, present them to the board for consideration, and then we can help with any sort of compiling of that or determining if those projects are eligible prior to the board making a final decision or taking a vote to move forward. So just a few things that we would say to consider when you're going through that process is, and you may well have already thought of all this, but are there specific projects that you as a select board already know that you'd like to fund? So before you even get into discussions or the things that you, you know as a board of the, right off the, right from the beginning that you definitely want to dedicate some of these funds to. Do you have a capital budget plan, and do you want to align with that capital budget plan? In terms of proposed projects, some cities and towns are kind of doing a matrix or a scoring to kind of evaluate and prioritize their projects. If, if that's something that you're interested in, we can help you with that. And then are you purely going to use the money for government projects, or are you going to, are you going to consider designated funds to nonprofits, businesses, or residents that were impacted by the pandemic? Again, that's something, if you do decide to do, we can help you with some of the program guidelines if you wanted to roll out something like that. And then the file is just a caveat that I say to every town because I've, I've worked in towns for 24 years. Right up until this point, I was a municipal employee for 24 years, and, and just want to give a little bit of caution that if you are considering using that revenue loss section for your general government services, that you just keep in mind that, that, that is a non-reoccurring revenue. So in future years, you're not going to be able to use that to fund your operating expenses. So just keep that in your mind and be mindful that if you are going to use it, you should have a plan of what you'll do in the subsequent years to fund those, those operating expenses if they're going to reoccur. And that's it for the overview. There we go.
Thank you, Jennifer. I know I have questions, but I think before I ask mine, I'd like to see if there's anybody else that has questions. I know we have Dave Bujon from Water here in the room, and Jay Ic from Chief Sartell from Public Safety, the police department is here. And I don't see anybody else here. We did ask all the departments to list, so we have a list of projects, and I have some questions about some of them, but I guess I'd move to Dave or Chief Sartell first. So Dave, any questions?
No, not so far.
How about you?
Any chance you could put the, the slide back up on the eligible expenses? I think it was one of the first or second ones, basically about the projects.
Yeah, sure.
That one was, that was, that is the one where I couldn't take notes fiercely enough.
I'll, I'll send this to you, Chief, too. I'll send you a copy of it.
A lot to wrap your mind around. I mean, it's a pretty significant, you know, the connecting, as in any grant writing, would, it seems like it would be that type of, you know, justification, knowing that criteria succinctly as possible really helped me kind of understand how I can meld it to, to meet the needs. I, I like the fact you're thinking about actually kind of mirroring it with our capital. We have had issues procuring capital over the previous years, at least that I've been here. Be nice to see how this might be able to tap into that, and I think that's the one.
Yeah, so I, I'll send you this, Chief, so that you have it, but this really spells out the four categories that are in the legislation.
Jennifer, in your, in your estimation, in paragraph D, you talks about, you know, making those necessary investments, the broadband infrastructure, one kind of, that's a, you could, you could unpack that as to what that means. Things to support broadband, I think, are where, where we would be. We obviously have broadband, we've had access for broadband for, for a good amount of time. But that being said, the, the infrastructure to facilitate that, the IT rooms, the servers, the battery backups, all those things. I know we have, and one of the, the capital projects I have is in that, in that area, department-wide, meaning in building. Do you think that there would have to be some sort of nexus between my need to do that and the pandemic? Or is it just what it says, which is to make necessary investments in those areas? It doesn't seem like it's necessarily in support one way or the other. It's to, you know, continuous operations and those types of things.
So for this particular, I'd have to look at the projects a little closer to give you a definite answer, but it's, so you have to show that you're going to increase the speed and availability of your broadband. I think the intent here is that there were folks that could not communicate as well during the pandemic, and certain populations that couldn't communicate as well. And this is to, to make them whole and, and be able to communicate better. Hopefully not in the event of another pandemic, but, you know, I think that was an area that was recognized as a weakness in many municipalities. So we can look at it a little bit closer, Chief. You can kind of, you know, if you give me some more specifics, I will look at it and let you know if we think it's eligible. I think it also lets you do planning and design for those type of projects, which is great because sometimes those aren't covered, but it looks like that's covered in the bill.
Jennifer, can I ask a question?
Sure.
On that, I, I think it's the three, the, I haven't listed as three, the general government section. I think that the funds that are in that section are those the revenue loss funds that would go to general government?
Yes.
So I think that under general government revenue loss, broadband infrastructure could be something that could be beefed up with those funds. We don't know what that number is in that category, but something, I, I thought that's where the capital budget piece was, was under the general government, the revenue loss category.
So that's a, that's a really good point. So if you find that a particular project isn't eligible, say, for example, it, it wasn't eligible under the broadband, you, you could likely put that under the general government services. If you have a project that you know is, you know, a water sewer or broadband, and it fits perfectly into category D, then you would just put it into category B. That way it doesn't come against your revenue loss number. But if you don't, you're right, that, that category C really gives you some leeway to fund those projects that, that don't fall into A, B, or D.
So I, I guess my next question on that is, if you, I, I don't know exactly what our capital plan is or has been. I know two or three years ago what it was, but I don't know what happened, I guess, last year with that during the COVID time, where the capital plan sits right now. My, my question is, if it's not something that's in the capital plan under the general government thing, can you still look at it if it's not something that was already planned for?
Yes, yes, you can. You know, some, some towns don't even have a capital plan, to be perfectly honest with you. But they still fund, they still fund capital projects through their general revenue. So if it's something that you would have typically funded through general revenue, you can, you can fund it through that category.
Okay. Chief, any other questions?
No, I'm trying to wrap my mind around it, going a million miles an hour, trying to think. The first one, I think, is pretty wide-reaching, you know, to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts. You know, responding to a public health emergency is often like responding to any emergency, although obviously it has its own specific kind of characteristics. That said, that does seem to cover a lot of ground on the public safety standpoint, from vehicles to the ability to communication for all of those things. And certainly that covers a great deal of what is in our capital plans and in our budgets. If you looked at what had been carved out of our budgets for the past two or three, at least since I've been here, that I worked on, they most certainly would fall into that category. So this is a, this is a windfall in, in some ways, looking at these allowed uses.
Great.
So anybody else have questions? Chaz, how about you? Ross, I see Ross ready to roll. Let's, let Ross go.
Did they say anything about highway projects?
Yes.
Highway projects. If, if I'm right, it was under general government. I saw roads, which I hadn't seen before. So that would again be that revenue loss section. Is that correct, Jennifer? You want to talk about roads? Because I saw roads up there.
So you're absolutely right. It, it's under that general, and they actually mentioned roads specifically in the general government services. So I should also mention, you know, first of all, you have time to spend this money. You know, there's, there's plenty of years to spend this money, so you don't need to rush in terms of making a decision, although I'm sure there's projects that you would rather, you'd like to get done sooner rather than later. But in terms of the infrastructure, just keep in mind that now, you know, the bill, the infrastructure bill just passed. So you're, you're going to get some funds, I'm assuming, through that. We don't know what those are going to look like in terms of whether they need to be shovel-ready or, you know, but it is geared towards roads, bridges, water, sewer. So there's going to be another pocket of money that you're going to get for infrastructure. You know, hopefully, the way the, the guidelines come out, we can align it with this ARPA funding for you and kind of maximize what's best, you know, what's best for you using both. But, you know, we're, we obviously are keeping a close eye on that for you, and we'll keep an eye on the guidelines when those come out as well.
So I, I guess I'm gonna, can I ask one? Chaz, are you ready?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I guess the questions I had are things like this. We know we're getting 2.8 million. I'm going to just move the Al real quick because we're getting dark in here as this camera gets in the sun. Okay, yeah, that's fine. So when we look at that bucket of money, the 2.8 million, do, can we, can we allocate, even though we only have in hand 1.4 of that half of it, and we won't get the other half until next summer, can we, when we look at the projects, allocate the whole amount? Say, okay, here it is, here's the whole amount, and spend as we, as we need to implementing those projects? Can we in another year or two years, because you have to have committed it all by December of 2024, expended it by December of 2026? Can we say, okay, so now we see that the, the federal government is the Build Back Better bill. Okay, we're going to get X number of dollars from that, but we allocated this amount to a water project or an infrastructure project, the bridge. Can, can we say, okay, we're not going to use the funds from ARPA now for that. We're going to use the Build Back Better, and now we're, we want to reallocate the 700K that we haven't spent yet on that project. Do you know if we can do that?
As long as, I believe, I believe. I should say that because, as you know, it's, they call it an interim final rule, which is what the guidelines are. And hopefully, at some point, they're going to come out with an actual final rule, not an interim one. And so I would just caution that any answer I give could change tomorrow if the federal government changes something. We saw that with FEMA reimbursements and cares. They kind of kept changing things along the way. But my understanding is, yes, if you haven't spent it, you could change it. You could change it and use it under the infrastructure bill. But if you've spent it and then you report, your first report on ARPA will be due in April. If you've spent it and reported on it, reported on it, then you wouldn't be able to change it. But I think what you're asking is, if your plan is to use it, and then you, it turns out that you haven't spent something in the Build Back Better, infrastructure is a better place to fund either what's remaining or another piece, could you? And the answer is yes.
That was, that was one of my major questions as well.
Okay, I have another one. Can we fund a staff position, given the caveat that it only is, you know, you have to have a plan for funding it going forward? Could we fund, say, a human resources person as a full-time physician who would then have under them an outreach coordinator or public safety coordinator or someone that would help to coordinate the public health response? Say we want to put in a, a mental health component for the community or for, well, for the community, whether it's adults or children, whether it's under direct program or whatever. We would need a staff person to kind of oversee that. Can we fund staff people, and would that be under the general government piece? Or would that be under public health response? Fund a position that didn't exist, but that we feel we need.
So it depends on the position, just because you've mentioned a few different types. So if it's a public health position and more than 50% of their time is related to something that relates to the pandemic. So that doesn't mean that it's just vaccinations and, and, you know, tracing, and because you mentioned mental health, so that's certainly something that can be tied to the pandemic, and it's spelled out specifically. So that type of, that type of position, you can fund right from that first category. Public safety personnel, same thing. You have to show that it's more than 50% of their time is spent responding to the pandemic, which I think is very difficult. The chief would probably agree. That, that's going to be difficult under that category.
Just real quick, Jennifer, if I could stop you there so we, we can continue the train of thought. One of the things I think we have talked about internally with the, with the fire chief, the interim fire chief, is that, is support for COVID programs, testing, rapid testing, literature, changes in CDC guidelines, those guys down there, and subsequently me, when it gets distilled to this building and to, to my Th- those guys down there and subsequently me, when it gets distilled to this building and to, to my personnel, that's a, that's a pretty significant amount of time. And in talking with Chief, Deputy Chief Shepherd about it, it does seem like he'd be able to quantify it. 20 hours a week seems a little lofty, but that said, that may not be incorporating other aspects of communicating that to other departments within town. Maybe a good, it, would that be a permissible use for the fire department to put in for, you know, that type of of help? Because I can tell you, knowing certain terms, I know that I have pulled those guys away for significant blocks of time to help us through our exposure issues and to explain CDC guidelines to us that it, it's just way up here, Jen, to be honest.
Yeah.
And it's not a stretch to say that I would, I, it would not surprise me if they were already putting in for the 20. And even if they weren't, uh to be able to utilize their expertise in other areas of town, I think would be a pru- would be a prudent thing to do.
I agree. Um yeah, so chief, I think it, there's a couple of different ways you can look at it. You can either look at the individual positions, and if that position itself is more than 50% time spent on COVID, you can, you can certainly use the funds in that first category. The same is going to be true for equipment. You mentioned equipment earlier. So I had another town that wanted to fund an ambulance. Um but they really couldn't quantify that it was going to spend more than 50% of its time responding to COVID. That, that's, that's a little bit of a nuance that I don't like.
But in getting creative, though, i- i- I, I get that piece that it's not going to be 50% devoted to COVID in that instance. But in looking at paragraph A where it talks about responding to the pandemic or to a pandemic, to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, to re- to respond to a public health emergency, if you could show that you had more runs or if the runs took the ambulance out of time for a longer period of time rather than a normal run, which I, which I would, not being a public health expert by any stretch of imagination, that doesn't seem to be much of a stretch. Would that, would a purchase of a vehicle look better through that justification rather than through, you know, the 50%?
Right. Yeah, yeah, I agree. I mean, the, it, you really have to take it either position by position or project by project and kind of look at them exactly like you're saying. There's, I mean, there's a caveat on there that you can look at your whole department and say if you spend more than 50% of your time on COVID, but I don't think that's going to be the case going forward. Let's hope not, right? I'm sure you don't want to be spending more than, uh you've done that for long enough. Um so there's some flexibility in there, and we can help you look at it. If you're looking at certain positions, we'll, we'll help you look at it and determine if they're eligible. Um the HR position that you mentioned, if it wasn't something that was funded before. So anything that was funded before and go, and was cut during the pandemic, you can bring that. But if it's a new position.
We did have, we did have an HR person um in the budget, I think, two years ago. And it got cut from not this year, but the, what, um, the year before. It was 2019. It got cut uh during the um, not this past town meeting, but the town meeting before, right after COVID started, they just cut that position. And so I would want to bring that back and have that position do a lot of the stuff work with the fire chief, the police chief, and with town hall on um things like that. So I guess uh um, chief, what I'd like you to do is submit to us, to the Board of Selectmen, the ideas that you have for the funding, because we're going to be looking at everything as a whole um for that, when we evaluate the projects.
Well, one of my questions, Jennifer, kind of um touches upon what Veronica is talking about. In regards to that piece, which also has to do with EMS, fire, and, and police, um, being able to, as opposed to funding a position per se, um I know that these funds are um allowable to a nonprofit. So if we found a nonprofit, which is mental health, um that would be able to support our police and our fire departments, um would that be allowable under, under these funds?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, that one is spelled out specifically.
Right, so, so instead of looking at a position, we could look at, you know, something a little bigger that would be more comprehensive.
That, that can be discussed. So on the nonprofit piece, Jennifer, I'm moving on to affordable housing. We have an affordable housing trust um in place. Uh there are six properties that the town would like to transfer, town-owned properties, that we voted to transfer to the Affordable Housing Trust. The Affordable Housing Trust has no seed money. Can we use some of, can we transfer some of this to, and they are nonprofit, to them um for uh startup costs and planning costs and that sort of thing?
So there's certainly an affordable housing component in there. Um the only pe- the only part that I think I just want to check on before giving you an answer is whether or not you can transfer it to a trust. Um but there's certainly a big piece in there relative to using it for affordable housing. So I'll check on that for you.
So the town could use it to transfer the properties?
Yes.
And to the housing authority could use it to hire consultants that the um trust could use for planning affordable housing on those properties?
Correct.
Um, okay.
Well, there, there would be, Jennifer, three, probably three different components to that. Number one would be to um execute the transfers. Number two would be the um development of what the trust wants to do with those properties. Um and the third would be to, for the housing authorities to be able to then put that on the subsidized housing inventory.
I would, another piece is that I'd like to be able to continue, and maybe we would do this through the public outreach person or human resources person or whatever they are, um to continue the um support that we've given to people for uh housing and mortgage assistance. We used some, you, uh you probably know that, Jennifer, because you did the accounting for us. The um funds that were used for uh CMHA, for housing assistance and rental assistance for people during the pandemic. I would like to have some funds dedicated to continue that. And we did that through the housing trust, I believe. I think we had to. Uh it's something to do with how that worked in Massachusetts, I'm not sure.
No, we did.
That's that um central mass alliance, I think, right? Is that the one?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so that's good to know, because that, that type of eligibility, um if it was eligible under CARES is likely eligible under ARPA. A lot of that continues, so it's good.
Right, because a lot of that is uh fuel assistance as well. That's going to be kicking in shortly.
All right, so and unless other people have questions, I'm going to move on to my thoughts on the next part of this. Um and and Jennifer, thank you so much. I think what we're going to do right now, you can't see it, I'm going to have to go stand up there, I think, to make the owl. And I'll have to talk and wave or something to make the owl, look at the papers across the front. Um what we have, we asked all the departments to submit projects. And I think um what I'd like to do is categorize them as public health response. I have workers as my number two. I don't know what that, that is. I have premium pay for workers, et cetera. Number three, I have government services, the revenue loss piece, and number four, infrastructure. So what I'd like to do is kind of categorize them, get everything.
Excuse me, uh Veronica, I can use an alternative camera to get this, to get those uh posters uh in, in the, on the video, so you don't need to move the owl.
Oh, good, okay. Or I don't have to even move me, so the owl tracks me. Okay, yeah, that'd be great, Hartley. Um so what, what I thought process-wise is we just kind of categorized them, what, where do these fall in? Um and then spend the next, you know, at our next Board of Selectmen meeting, which is next Tuesday, talk about how we want to do project selection, and Jennifer, maybe we could um uh get these to you and then give you two weeks till our next working meeting, November 22nd, to let, it's two weeks from today, to let us know what projects are allowable under the, and of course, we have to um work on the uh procurement piece and all for for the ARPA support. But in any event, that aside, it would be two weeks to say, are these, maybe get a little more information on these, are they allowable, are they not? Um a, a, a dollar amount of about how each one of these would cost. I know Dave gave me dollars pretty much on every project that, for water, that he put out there. Um and we do have a bridge project that needs looked at. So are they allowable under ARPA? And then also to kind of calculate that revenue loss piece. Uh what does that mean in dollars? You know, are we looking at 20,000 or are we looking at 200,000 or 2 million? I don't know. So um what, what is that? And of, of course, that is within the limits of the 2.8 million that we have. And maybe too, we could hunt up the capital plan for the town and take a look at that. I, I think, I know I have one from probably two, maybe three fiscal years ago, when I was on capital planning.
Capital planning functioning in the meeting, or?
Uh, no. Um and the meeting last year was pretty brief. So I think it was the year before that, that, that I had, um, that we had a fully functioning committee. Um so anyway, so that, and then um I would like on the 6th of December, we have a working meeting set up then too, and a Board of Selectmen meeting on the 7th, on the 6th beside our projects, and um, you know, start defining at that point. So does that seem reasonable?
From my perspective, yes, absolutely, sure.
What about Board of Selectmen, Ross? Does that seem reasonable? Okay. All right, so that's pretty much um how we're gonna go forward. So I think um what I would like to do right now, Hartley, is just go up, is that okay? We're at about a, an hour, I think.
Uh yeah, just uh indicate what uh subject you'd like to address, and I'll move the camera toward that uh, that category on, on the posters.
Okay, so if you look at the front um of the room here, all the way to the left um is uh where I would want to start with the projects. And I'm going to go up there because I kind of want to number them as we go, or whatever. So um, wait for Hartley to get his camera trained.
Um land, land use and housing uh and uh building department, that, is that where you'd like me to start?
Yes.
Okay, I'll zoom in on those. Z- zoom in, zoom in the uh old sense.
Okay, when I, when I can see them on the, on the screen or something, I'll, I'll relax. Trying to see what I have from other people who maybe didn't get it. Can you see it, Hartley?
Yes, I can, I can see it. Uh I have the camera on um.
I can't hear you, Hartley.
Okay, I have the camera on the posters on the left, on land use and uh and, and building department.
Think I can make the owl spin. All right, I'm going to zip up here. Land use, did it work? Are we sipping?
Yeah.
All right, is it following me? Is the camera following?
Sorry you can't hear me. I thought you could.
No, it wasn't.
Earlier.
Yeah, but then it switched. I don't know what happened. Anyway, it's okay. I think I can make the owl point to me.
All right, well, I'll follow you uh as you make your.
My way down.
Right, uh I'm looking at the screen here and seeing, I guess you can't see the.
The words so well.
Well, what, what I've did is put the, put this camera on you at the uh, at the poster, and, and I'll follow you. I don't know why it's not appearing on this particular screen, but, you know, anyway.
All right, well, we'll just go with what we.
Well, it is, it is showing Veronica.
Yeah, it's, it's working here.
Okay.
So land use, I did get two from them. I thought they were going to come in today. Look at it. One was the um, the stormwater stuff. The uh, to spend money on the stormwater plan and education of the um, so this is the town's stormwater plan. And there's uh, we're required to do an education of the public piece of this. And then there was also, I, I think it was digitizing records and online permitting. So um. I don't know. I know I saw stormwater somewhere. Is that like the fourth one, infrastructure?
Yeah, but there was also pieces of the um.
It's also on the hiring.
It, this was um the uh vulnerability. Wasn't there pieces of the vulnerability they were looking to help on?
What do you mean by that? Pieces of the vulnerability?
Vulnerability, infrastructure, yes, yes.
So where I see this fitting is under either infrastructure or general government.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, housing, I think, was part of what we talked about before, so it's down there. And building department, I didn't get anything from them, did you?
Building department is where we would, I think, the permitting uh software would go. There's also uh, with that permitting software, they would need, I think, um some IT, like um iPads.
Laptops for the field.
Yeah. So that they don't have to submit it out of the office.
Right, same thing up here.
I think those two pieces go together between land use and the building.
And building. Okay, I'm going to leave that. Um public safety, Chief Sartow, I suppose, will get me the list. I didn't get anything from fire either, so. Um Board of Health, they wanted an additional uh nursing staff for, for contact tracing related to COVID. And I think that's spelled out in there. And I think this is a one, the public health piece of it.
Yeah.
Um facilities, I didn't get anything from facilities.
Well, the, in, under Board of Health, I believe, mental health, um there's also subsidies we need to strengthen up our our SOP for how we're dealing with the increase in mental health, the increase in subsidies.
All right, so this is all category one. All right, uh moving on to highway, we have the Greenville Bridge with the water main extension for future exten- expansion. So uh um to allow for that, stormwater management, catch basin cleaning, MS work, and that's the same document that Jessica told me about here.
Yep.
So um those would all fit. This is the infrastructure, so this would be four. This might be general government.
I think it is.
The revenue loss piece. All right, and then water, water is all infrastructure, that's the four.
So the first one's 2, 220,000. That's the planning of the, the water treatment plant for the three walls.
Okay. And then you gave me numbers in what you gave me for each of these, so we're good with that.
120, 100, and then, and then uh the, number two and three would be that tho- those are the, the three most important.
Beasley.
Right. And the uh, the two generators could be next year or the year after.
All right, so just, we'll look at all the water projects.
Right.
All right. Um, does the PFAS, won't funding, did that come from somewhere else?
Not for planning.
Not for planning?
O- only for billing.
Okay, okay.
And the, and, and we're 95% sure of getting 15 million for billing, but not for planning.
But not for planning, all right. Um council on aging, uh to increase the food program, um evidence-based education, essential worker support, particularly appropriate an hourly wage for the outreach coordinator or social worker, which is an, oh, a currently an open position that is funded. Um but I, I would kind of like to see this put in with the health and public health and safety. the health and public health and safety piece, kinda look at that and see how we put that all together.
And that's where I think I I would like to um, collaborate with both chief Sartell and um, fire in regards to that, because we would be able to possibly fund a a agency with mental health with with the ability to provide all of those services as opposed to us looking at individuals.
Well, I I like the idea of having a human resources person in town, so we'll talk.
That's separate.
I I see it as all part of a whole, a whole um, human services.
Right.
Uh, area, and I think it should be looked at it holistically.
It's not like that. It's not one one side spits off. We need to be a little more proactive in regards to certain areas. And and not just think that one particular thing is gonna cover all of it.
Well, I'm not thinking that. I'm I'm thinking that there should be a person in charge of seeing that if of interfacing with the um, if we were to choose for mental health and outside organization, interfacing with that organization. Working with the outreach coordinator, working with um, police and fire. Uh, you know, having this position underneath that. I I just think who in town hall is gonna be um, checking in on the services to make sure they're actually gonna be done for the town, if it's with a nonprofit? Who's gonna actually be seeing that, you know, um, all the COVID things are being done? We can talk.
Yeah.
Um, so this is mostly under one.
Yeah.
This might be under the three, general government, revenue replacement. Library, I didn't hear from library recreation. Um, I know there's an outdoor recreation piece of this. And I'm looking at overhaul of the plot behind town hall alongside the um, fitness court with shading, seating, making it more uh, parking ADA accessibility, uh, set it up for farmer's market, community yoga, gathering out an area for outdoor focused classes, a storage building not too far from the river for the purpose of outdoor recreation storage, which would be like kayaks or um, bicycles, things like that. To build up outdoor recreation here in the center. Uh, healthy childhood environments, and this fits into kind of on the side of uh, mental health for kids to, anyway, it's worth looking at. And then the summer rec space uh, for a large group program. Um, look at that as a whole and figure out how we're gonna support that program and where next year. Because last year was a um, a challenge in finding a space for the uh, the summer rec program. So outdoor rec, um, mental health and summer rec space. And I think this goes one, um, and maybe three. All right, uh, cemetery and parks, the Adam's Dam erosion, that's the outdoor of walking space to fix that along there. And then the gazebo restoration. Again, this falls under outdoor spaces, which might be either one or three, is my thought. Um, affordable housing, I think we talked about housing already, right?
Yeah.
Um, carpet replacement, so this is infrastructure. This is, I'm not sure, one, one, two, three kinda thing?
Yeah.
Uh, outdoor spaces. Broadband, which is four. Uh, community supports, that's the food program, et cetera, mental health. Um, uh, premium pay for staff, et cetera. Mental health services, again, these are all R's. I'm not, you know, these are the things that we had talked about last time we met.
Yeah.
Economic impacts, services, IT, water. And I'm looking at building, software, bylaw review, software, is that what that says? Um, okay, and then water upgrades, road and bridges, water and sewer, capital planning, public safety, Greenville Road Bridge, PFAS water treatment, water department phone system.
The the phone, the phone system, you've taken it off the list. All I need to have is the go ahead.
The go ahead. Okay, maybe this is something that isn't ARPA funded that we talked about outside of. Okay, I'm gonna move this, but you should bring that to us.
Yeah, I think I put that on since I heard David mention it and.
Right, all all I need is to to uh, right now, we're part of the phone system.
We don't need to talk about that right now.
So.
Yeah, okay, facilities truck, that would be capital plan, so I think that's three. Let's look at that, if that's there, fiber IT connection, um, to and between municipal buildings and capital projects.
Chief Sartell has his hand up.
Oh, he does. Okay, I'm sitting down. Chief, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanted to get in on.
Wait, I can't hear you. Are you muted?
Nope, I don't think so.
He's not muted. Um, why can't we hear him?
I can hear him.
You hear me?
Hartley, we can't. So whatever you were doing with the camera, switch it back.
I have.
Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay.
We can't hear. Hartley, we can't hear you. You're muted.
No, I I can hear the chief and I can hear you, but I guess you can't hear me.
Through the door, but not well. In in other words, I can't hear you on the um, Zoom system.
Well, you can't hear the chief either. Um, all right, why don't I?
I can always.
Pardon me, why don't I open the door here and you'll be able to hear pardon me about all this talking.
Jennifer, could you try saying a few words?
Sure, I I could hear the chief. I don't know, can they?
Okay, we can't hear you either.
And I can hear Jennifer just fine.
Why don't we do this? I'll, you can hear me, I'll open the door here and and because I think you're the chief.
And you can hear Jennifer. We can't hear.
Problem is, with the, with the owl, video is fine, no problem with the video. Just make sure everything's plugged in there. And what I, what we can do is if you can't hear the people speaking, I will tell you who's speaking.
Well, no, that's not, that's not gonna work. That's not gonna work at all.
Whatever whatever um, you did when you were trying to switch the camera, can you undo that?
I did, I told him, okay, you didn't hear me. I did. I, you're back on on the Zoom camera.
Can you look at your your um?
I don't, you don't have a.
Microphone, let's get that some, that human done, what, on the Zoom thing.
What about you?
Hartley, we could always address these things.
Now we hear you.
Very good.
We can hear you now.
Excellent.
Go ahead.
Sure, I just wanted to jump in. I I know Chaz had uh, had mentioned the mental health piece. One of the things that I had listed for our project, I think would fit, is a is a peer support program where we would bring in a consultant to uh, train the trainer, train up some of our supervisors and field training officers uh, to recognize signs and symptoms of uh, of issues uh, with the with the staff um, and direct them in the proper way. There's a number of national programs, Blue Help, Blue Courage. There's a, there's, there's several of them, Chaz, that I've got kinda earmarked to do that uh, and some delivery in our local area to kind of help us along with that. Be a small project, uh, but there would be some funding involved uh, for staffing, for backfilling of overtime, for bringing in the uh, the instructor and that type of thing. On on the uh, on the infrastructure plan, for for me, uh, one of the things I had slated was um, uh, an HVAC review of our building for uh, ventilation purposes. Uh, I've talked to Rob about that over the years and we do think that that would probably be something we would like to have done at some point by somebody. Uh, the the design of it and the review would probably be a lion's share of the project, just to even get a sense of what the heck we were even looking at. Um, in addition to that, I've thought, working with uh, Pepperell's uh, REC, which is the uh, the new dispatch uh, that we are fixing to move over, to see whether or not a that a phone system for emergency services amongst the three towns would be something covered by ARPA. Uh, we are depending much more on our phone system than we were pre-pandemic for purposes of returning phone calls rather than having officers respond to the field uh, to handle mundane issues, as well as not uh, trying to push the amount of people out of the building as possible. Uh, in days of old, we probably would have had someone come to the building, whereas i- in this, these times, we are much more apt to return phone calls. And we're talking about on administrative type of of issues and and things of that nature. The inability to talk back and forth with dispatch and transfer calls back and forth around those three towns and even back and forth from the fire department uh, to the police department would certainly be something that we would be able to address in that. Uh, so I've got Director Stairs looking at that. I'm not so sure which jurisdiction would fund that and how that would work, seeing as how we are regional. But that is something we we had on our list as well. Uh, the other thing for uh, we, I had an energy audit. I did see that we have some grant funding uh, coming to do that audit and even some of the work. I kinda had that part and parcel with a, with a, an audit of the um, HVAC system. But in addition, and I I touched on this a little bit early, our ability to stay fully functioning uh, during emergencies with an uninterrupted power supply and looking at our ability to provide broadband without, within the whole building uh, for for purposes of training and and those types of things. Um, we do need some IT support, you know, to kinda clean up our IT room. Uh, after we had nine eleven removed, we still have some, a lot of residual leftover uh, equipment that's no longer, that is obsolete. Uh, there's all, there's a whole kinda technical uh, project in there uh, and to tie that all into a a battery supply, so it kicks over right to our generator uh, when it does with with no interruptions. So we do have some, I do have a handful of projects in in that realm. The the mental health component for us, I do think the most effective one would be what uh, we're talking about in the near term. Um, is getting some some people of our own trained up to help each other and a peer support counseling uh, setup. But I am exploring some other areas uh, where we have an annual checkup, mental health checkup that we can offer employees, maybe provide a bonus incentive day if they have worked to engage in that, that those types of things as part of that um, wellness, uh, in that type of thing. There is also the thought process of maybe providing a break room outside out back of the station uh, that would be able to get people outside. A small dollar amount, which certainly goes hand in hand with some of the other projects that I'm hearing kind of uh, townwide. So I do have a a handful of projects. I'm not sure what the timeline looks like, but we're more than happy to share a little bit more and or start to do some work in tracking down prices if it comes uh, it comes to that.
What I'd like, chief, is if you could write all these up that you've mentioned um, and send them to selectmen@townstonma.gov so that we can consider them with the others. Um, and figure out how we're going to apportion this windfall that we have and um, you know, go from there. So if you could send those all to us, that would be great. And then Jennifer, we will get them to you at at some point over the next week, the state agencies allow. We have, we have a a little bit of time to get that done.
Sounds good.
And then on, in our meeting in two weeks, our discussion will be more around how we apportion the funds, which projects seem to um, be the most reasonable to fund, keeping in mind other uh, funds that might be coming down the road from both the states, ARPA, and the federal Build Back Better. So. All right, um, anything else on this? All right, then what I'm gonna do is compile the lists of what we've got and um, finish the procurement piece that we need to do for the um, assistance or consulting assistance, and we will go from there.
You know, um, I have some specific questions that have to do with IT that would not be something that I'd wanna talk about in public. Would I be able to talk to Jennifer in regards to those pieces to see if they were covered?
Um, send, can you? I don't know what those pieces, um.
I just wanna know if they are or not, and then I can, you know, if they're not, then I'm not gonna.
Okay, all right, well, we'll talk about that. Um, in a minute, I think I wanna uh, that, yes, I think we're gonna compile the list of projects.
Right.
So, okay, um. So unless anybody else has anything else, I'm ready to move on to the next piece of need.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you so much. Nice to see you all.
All right, are we good with everything? I I don't see why you couldn't, Chaz. You know, just check them out.
Yeah.
Um, I I wanted to give her a list and say, these are all the projects, which of these seem to fit?
Right, before I give you that list, I wanna find out.
Whether it fits or not?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, um. All right, uh, chief, are you good with what needs to come to us?
Sure, yeah, I mean, and and overview, one of the things that I have found with uh, with working with Jennifer, she's the same consultant we've been using for the past a few months, is a paragraph or two to justify and connected to seems to rule the day versus just bullet points in an overview of the project from that perspective. It seems that she needs a little bit more granular of information to be able to make a call.
I want a, um, what I'd like is a, like a, a pretty broad one with whatever information you wanna provide to say, should we even think about it or not, you know, um, and then uh, go from there. So if you don't have all the details, send it anyway, um, and and we'll see what we can do. You know, we'll give them to her and uh, get those back. So we would need them within the next day or two. Don't, don't spend a lot of, certainly put in a COVID-related reason. Uh, because that's.
I'm checking.
Yeah, for some of the stuff, but the general government stuff, not so much. And we don't even know what that dollar amount is that we can allocate from our two point eight million, so. All right, so get those to us and um, I'll probably, it'll be later this week, probably in the Thursday timeframe when I ship it out to Jennifer. I'm gonna take what water has sent me. They've sent me a list prior. Um, I have from board of, some people, before they put it up on the sheets, they sent what they wanted. And so I'm just gonna kinda compile it and and ship it out, maybe move things around a bit, but in the one, two, three, four category kinda moving around. So. All right, um, I'm gonna move on to uh, unless there's anything else, I'm gonna move on to section four point one and four point two. I I think I wanna take four point two, a discussion of the Veterans Day holiday and the day after Thanksgiving holidays first.
Wanna take that first?
Yeah, I'm kinda working backwards here. But David, you're heading in, not even gonna stick around.
And not unless you're looking, me, uh, just so you know, the main, the Mason Street Bridge is all have to do with, we're trying to make the project, help you guys to make the project work. So that's why I talked to Jim about that. And the same thing with South Harbor, the road's in horrible shape.
Oh, so you're saying get the water piece done prior to the paving of the road?
The thing is, when you put it as a water project, it's gonna pass, you know, for the funding. So people, it's in our capital planning already for the harbor, our South Harbor Road. And it just, it just, I'm I'm trying to help pave the road. And if you put the water main, then you can pave the road.
That is true, under ARPA funds.
Correct.
Yes.
So a lot of, a lot of that has everything to do with helping other departments in the town.
So same with eight, then, the Mason uh.
Right.
Where, Greenville Road.
Because I I can do everything off the, off the uh, pavement, but I can't do the bridge.
Okay.
So that makes.
Well, to do the bridge and the second bridge, that that goes over our funds available for this, so.
Right, but if I can, if I can come up with an engineering way of doing it, I just, just mention it to me and and I'll, I can think of someone.
Okay, all right.
That's, I am an engineer, so.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. All right, because Veterans Day is Thursday and because it's the day after Thanksgiving, and we were trying to figure out, I was trying to figure out who gets what holiday when and how does this work? So I I put two things in there. One is from the employee policies and procedures. So it looks like for full-time employees, Veterans Day is a holiday. Full-time, non-union employees, Veterans Day is an approved holiday, but the day after Thanksgiving is not. For people that are union people, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, and the day after Thanksgiving are allowed holidays. And.
I believe that the fire, there's no mention, and police is no mention, on the day after.
Day after Thanksgiving.
The other union contracts do specifically mention.
The clerical, I think it is, and the supervisors.
Highway Water, they have a floating holiday, plus they have the day after Thanksgiving. Supervision, supervisors have day after Thanksgiving. Clerical has a half day before and a day after Thanksgiving. Police is no mention, and fire is no mention.
And then we have all the people that are non-union employees, which includes all of the library and some of the people here at Town Hall. And I don't know who else, really. I do know who else I have a list, but, you know. So what it says in the policies and procedures is, so this is for non-union employees, with the approval of their department supervisors, full-time employees may request to work for the Veterans Day holiday when it falls on a weekday, which it does this year, in exchange for the day after Thanksgiving off. So it just gets really confusing employee to employee, depending on what type of employee you are. And we have, we have on the list sometime after January to look at the personnel policies and procedures. But I think it would be good to, to decide for these holidays coming up in November and what we're doing. And then when we do look at all this, to kind of mesh it. Because right now, I know for the two lieutenants are in the supervisors' union. They get Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, and the day after Thanksgiving off. But the rest of the police, with what you're saying, is that's not the case.
I didn't, it looks like it's not mentioned the day after, so I'm.
Right.
Assume they don't get it.
They don't get it. So, and then it begs the question of, is Town Hall open both on Veterans Day and the day after Thanksgiving? Because we have some people that should be working a town clerk's office. Is the town clerk's office, the assistant town clerk is in the union, but the town clerk is not. So what happens in, what happens there? When are we open and when are we closed? So thoughts? I don't know. What else to, what do we do? Do we say we're open the day after Thanksgiving, we're closed on Veterans Day? Do we say we're open Veterans Day and close the day after Thanksgiving? Or do we stay open both days and people work what they work? Based on their contract or non-contract? That's the case maybe. If your clerical supervisors and highway water, you get both Veterans Day and the day after Thanksgiving off in addition to Thanksgiving Day, and taking that as given. So for those people, it's not an issue. For everybody else, it becomes what do we do?
So. People who have it in their contracts as a holiday, I'm talking the day after Thanksgiving. They stay home when they get paid for it, so they get it.
Right.
People who don't have it in their contract. They need to take it as a personal day. Well, thinking, I'm thinking there's not much point in keeping Town Hall open on a Friday after Thanksgiving because.
I agree.
Most of the employees have their contract, won't be here.
Okay. So what about Veterans Day then? That's the trade-off day. Are we open on Thursday or are we closed on Thursday? You see what I'm saying? Because if you, if you say, okay, everybody gets a day after Thanksgiving off, then what, what do we do about Veterans Day? And?
I think. Veterans Day is a holiday, which should be closed. And then the Thursday after Thanksgiving, some will get it in their contract as a vacation day. Ones that don't, I think we still should be closed. They can take it as a.
Personal day.
As a personal day.
So we should state something about that.
But I think municipal buildings should be closed on Veterans Day and after Calway purposes, the day after Thanksgiving. So if you had an individual that is non-contract. That does not want to take a personal day for that, are they allowed to come in and work their shift? Would be the question. Day after Thanksgiving.
With the Town Hall closed.
I'm okay with that. Actually, that might be.
I mean, that could be one person who comes in.
Right, so.
It's the option so that they don't have to take a personal day until we can straighten out everything.
So what we could say is the building is closed on Veterans Day and the day after Thanksgiving. If you are a non-contract employee that does not get this, that's a, you know, you can take one or the other accessory. So in other words, if you want to work Veterans Day and the building's closed, you're coming in to do work. It's, I'm hearing that, oh, it's good to have the building closed with no interruptions. So you can come in and do that on Veterans Day if you want to take the day after Thanksgiving off. Or you take Veterans Day because that's the one that's allowed, and you come in and work the day after Thanksgiving. And that if you don't, or you can take a personal day for the day after Thanksgiving.
Now for Town Hall, I understand how that would work. That, that would be my suggestion. The, the, it begs the question now of, the library is completely different.
Right.
The library, if it's closed, their main function is to be open to the public. So what about those employees? Because those employees are not contract, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah.
I think every single library employee is non-contract. So that means that. They, they have to take the personal day, I guess. But some of them don't even work all the time. You know, there's a lot of part-time employees.
Thank you. This gets really so. Have some people here on Veterans Day and some people here on Friday after Thanksgiving. Public safety folks, police, fire. Close. I don't think it's a financial hit because day after Thanksgiving is covered and. We have five contracts anyway, so it's not a change in what we have to pay.
Okay, so what happened, because we did get a grievance last year, that's the other reason that I'm bringing this up.
Right.
Is because of Christmas Eve. It, it was declared, not voted by the selectmen, but it was declared a day off. And by the Office of the Board of Selectmen without a selectman's vote. So there was a grievance filed by, I think it was, police. Due to the fact that it was a holiday and they didn't get it, so they should get holiday pay. I'm, I'm serious. This is what is bringing this all up to me. Do we, if we do that, then the police and fire, they don't get that day after Thanksgiving off. It's a regular workday for them. But if we say that Town Hall is off and that non, and the library and the, they get a vacation day, do we wind up in a bond? I, I'm serious. That's why I brought this up. We have the same go-around with Juneteenth.
Which gives three of their contracts, it says the day after Thanksgiving is off, so that's, seems to me is sort of a non-decision item, that's already decision.
For those folks, yes.
So Jay, what do you think about day after Thanksgiving regarding your force?
Well, a couple of things. First, if I, if I get booted off, I'm on my laptop and it's running out of batteries. I do not think it, it gets you into a grievance territory because we have a contract with our employees that do not provide that as a holiday. It's one thing I would, I would always say when it comes to kind of looking at this from a shift work perspective, it is a very different animal. Our, our holidays are merely just paid holidays pretty much exclusively, except for those of us in administrative positions who can get the day off in lieu of, and then that way there they get paid. So it, it is a very different animal than what you see at more administrative office-like positions. But I don't think you're opening yourself up to any sort of issues by offering employees in other departments or other divisions of the town, something you're not offering a collective bargaining unit here. I don't, I don't think you're walking into any sort of issues, at least from my perspective. Doesn't mean they wouldn't file something, but I, I, I wouldn't even understand what they would be pointing at as to what they were filing. I think in thought right from the get-go, and I, 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 I think the matter is, is resolved, the grievance from last Christmas. I thought it, it resolved itself in a sense of, I thought it was silly, quite frankly, and I, and I don't think it had any merit. And I think our Labor Council felt the same. So I don't, I don't even think that this day after Thanksgiving is any sort of an issue. If you were, if you wanted to provide it or something like that, I would ask you to be a little more clear than we were last year. But aside from that, I, I don't think you're opening up any sort of liabilities that I can think of anyways. I think it's all covered by either their individual contract or by the policy manual in place for my, for my administrative staff that are not covered by a CBA.
I, I agree with you on that, but at the same time, we did get that class action grievance that we looked at in June. That, that wound up being denied, but it was because of Christmas Eve.
Save Christmas Eve for another discussion.
I do think it does, it is time to start thinking about what Juneteenth looks like because I do think that that's a state mandated holiday. What strings that brings with it when the governor mandates a holiday, I don't think there's any mandate that you pay people for it or that you do anything, you just recognize it as a holiday. But I would defer to council on that, but I do think that would be more of something that would concern me than something that already is covered via contract or policy manual as it pertains to the day after Thanksgiving.
So what do we do about the night that?
That's really the issue.
Because by, by the policies and procedures manual, and, and they are closed both days, that's already been announced. There wasn't a. There was no discussion with the Board of Selectmen on that, but I know it's been announced. So they're closed both days. So I assume that people that were working on the day after Thanksgiving would be taking a personal day then. Or a vacation day.
They have those vacations, maybe on benefit, that much case.
Yeah, some of them are.
Be unpaid.
I know that. I don't even know how you do that because you don't schedule people for the day when they're closed.
Right. I think that's, library's closed on Veterans Day, and it's going to be closed on Thursday and Friday, Thanksgiving.
And Saturday. That's on. But. So if we take a vote that we're specific that for non-union employees, the building is closed and is.
Also, let's just start off with it's closed to the public on Veterans Day and. Thanksgiving.
Okay. Okay, so let's have that first vote. Is there a motion to close Town Hall on the day to the public on Veterans Day and the day after Thanksgiving?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Just extending, union, yes.
Veronica, yes. All right, so. Close to the public on both of those days.
And that was obvious with the laser, just Town Hall.
I could just Town Hall, that was a motion, should I say, on municipal buildings? But then, then that puts us into. You haven't seen that grievance, Ross. I, I should give that to you. That's my concern, which may be a non-concern, but Chaz, you saw it too. You know what I'm talking about. I, I. Okay, so I could, I think we're good with saying it's close to the public. And I said Town Hall because other municipal buildings might be working on their own time.
Well. And water party, that's already in there. That will start soon, the water party, so they close that day.
They're going to close all this.
And they're all, they are all union. The whole shop is union, so that's. Same with cemetery and parks.
They're all, yeah.
Um, highway, same thing. They're all.
Highway is part of their water contract, so yes.
They're all union, so that's not a.
We've got to keep police and fire going anyway.
And they're, they're on their own contracts, so, which does not specify. So.
So really, we're only talking about non, non-contract individuals. That's what it sounds like to me. As far as compensation goes. Yes.
Right. So council on aging is union. The library isn't, they got the same building. Council on Aging is, is union, so they're closed, and that's fine.
And.
Library is non.
Senior Center need to have some people there or they do meals on wheels or anything like that type of. I think they do it the day before and they give them meals that are frozen so that they can heat them up themselves.
Right. And there's, there's a Thanksgiving dinner, I think like that Monday or something.
Absolutely.
So.
So. Closing all municipal buildings on Friday after Thanksgiving doesn't interfere with normal senior center.
I'm saying the Town Hall is close to the public. The only building that is in question is the library.
There'll be non-contracted individuals in the library that, that it's kind of following between the tracks.
So do we say non-contracted individuals to whom this? To whom the personnel policies and procedures manual applies to? I mean, do we even have to get that specific?
I think anyone that's, would have been working on Friday after Thanksgiving, isn't covered by a union contract. Take a personal vacation day if they have.
Okay.
Otherwise, they're not paying.
Otherwise, it's they're not paying. Okay, all right, so. So then we would say any non-contracted individual, so the motion is any non-contracted individual.
Which means by contract, the non-union contract.
Non-union, yeah. Non-union contracted individual. Who normally would work on a Friday. Who normally works on the day, on a Friday.
The Friday after Thanksgiving.
Will take a personal. Personal or vacation day. Or vacation day, or we could, okay, for the Friday after Thanksgiving.
I will make that a motion.
So. I have a second then?
Doesn't that violate your personal policies? That you have, you can use it, Veterans Day is a Florida holiday?
If they want to come in and work on Veterans Day, I think that would be okay then.
Right, so I miss bringing it up because it, it kind of contradicts your personal policies.
Where we'll work on Veterans Day. Buildings close to the public, that's what we got.
All right, so in addition to taking personal day or vacation day. Alright, so in addition to either taking personal day or vacation day, leave without pay, they have the option of working Veterans Day and taking, getting paid for Thanksgiving.
That's correct.
And then that, and then that would, as per personal policies, and that, that would legit.
Okay, so I'm amending it to say any non-union contracted individual who normally works on a Friday may take a personal day, a vacation day, leave without, or leave without pay for the Friday after Thanksgiving. Alternatively, they may work on Veterans Day.
It's very personal policies.
Right. That, that, that puts it right in writing.
Doesn't make it sound like we're, that's a gadget working on a holiday.
Right, it's already there.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll second that motion. I'll second the amendment.
Okay. Let's see, alright, all those in favor?
Just six and three unions.
Alright, the motion carries. Alright, so that just leaves us with the criteria for TA search and the THR description. Background and qualifications, so have we thought more about that?
As far as background in qualifications.
And I think this is things that we're suggesting to the committee and um as, so that when they review the, okay, thanks, Dave. Dave, quick question before you go. Is what's up there the same as what you emailed me? Okay.
I just hit the top, the, the tag off because it was too much.
Okay.
And I'm gonna try to get there, do an infrastructure to he- help the, the fire department also.
Alright, okay, thank you. So this is best guidance for the um search committee?
Oh, um, I will well, first I'll start off by saying that the all members that have been appointed have been sworn in by the town clerk. We did meet on Thursday of last week. In that meeting, we organized. I was voted as the chair to the search committee. Andrew Funk was um voted as the secretary. And um it was a vice chair, I can't remember if it was Dave or Duncan. At the top, I'm like, I didn't, I did, I hadn't written that up yet. However, we did establish officers. We document um that um we had talked about in regards to the timeline was reviewed um and understood uh and agreed upon. There was um a question in regards to um when the town administrator would actually um be hired. And they felt, the board felt that the uh April 1st was a bit aggressive, but they said that they would take that into consideration.
Uh, okay, good.
I'm just throwing that.
Okay.
You had February 1st until April. And it was, I expressed that we had talked about um that Ross is going to be with us um to go through the budget process, and that seemed to be just wanting to work with the, the new individual as well. They, it was just a concern, they were saying that any individual that would be currently working may need at least uh four weeks uh notice, once we go through the process.
Okay, so what, when was our timeline for posting? Um, Thanksgiving?
Well, we haven't, we haven't, we didn't nail down a time for posting, we just said the posting, proposed it, we just said December.
So if you post, say you post early December, give it a month for applicants, that's January. Two weeks to figure out your shortlist, two more weeks interview.
Then to us.
Board could be interviewing people early February.
Right, that's what I think.
That's what I'm hoping.
Two weeks for that, and then first of March, they make a decision to hire somebody, and the person needs thirty day notice, so they start first. The hiring could be done March.
So I'm just saying that they, they expressed concern that it, it could, that sounds a little bit tight, but
It depends on how applications come in.
Right, and that's what we also talked about as well, so we're, we're, we're all on the same page, we're just looking at how tightly we need to judge, and the reason why that came up is because we have to schedule meetings accordingly as well. On, with everybody's time schedule and all of that kind of stuff, so we just wanted to make sure that there was plenty of time for that. Having said that, the, uh, the understanding is that the sooner that the board of selection um gives them the uh job description and the posting the search committee then in turn would develop their strategies going forward, and what they need to do.
Okay, so in the job description, we would put the qualifications.
Yep.
So that's what I've done.
Yep. Now, as far as that's concerned, I had submitted, I put in um several different job descriptions from other towns.
Right.
So, what, I guess what document are we, are you just talking about qualifications? Or are you uh getting to catch me upon? What are you looking for?
I was just looking for search criteria, what do we want this person to have? You know, as far as background and qual- qualifications. To give, I put on your criteria for TA search and THR description, what background, what qualifications, what qualities?
So but as far as education is concerned, I would like to see a master's level or um longevity in a, in a position as a town administrator.
So you want someone that's already been a town administrator?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay, I disagree. I don't, I'm not so, I, I want um education, I want municipal, it's education meaning I, I would take a BA. I would be okay with that. As long as it was in I would take a BA, I, I don't even know that I would fall for that, I would want municipal experience. And when I say municipal experience, I, I mean as an employee but also I would count um serving on boards in their town. I don't require, for me, I don't require them to already have been a town administrator. And the reason I say that is because I don't know that as a town we can afford to pay for an experienced town administrator. That's why I say that. But I do think serving on boards and committees is a plus. But not a requirement, but a plus in the, in the town that they live in. So in other words, I want them to have an understanding of how government works in a town or in a municipal. But I, I don't, if they haven't been a town administrator, that would be okay, but they were a if they worked for a municipality and were a treasurer collector or an accountant or a you know, any other position, I, I would think they might be able planner. Town planner. To me, what's important is planning and finances. And I would love to have a separate HR person to do the um insurance paperwork, the FMLA paperwork, uh who's a, a real HR person. That's what I would like, an agency, that, that would be fun, so. I don't know, Ross, you, you're TA. What do you require in yourself? What did you have before you became a TA? Do you see what I'm saying? I mean, like, at some point you were in a TA and then you were a TA, so
So I had lots of municipal experience, selectmen planning board, capital planning, a lot of working with, with town governments, my planning job. Think Sterling liked the fact that I've been on the planning board, they wanted someone who could sort of get their planning and master plan going again. Not specific HR training, I think TA can handle the day-to-day personnel things like this, posting a job, and interviewing people, and getting the paperwork. The major thing, if you want to rewrite personnel bylaws, that takes I think a dedicated resource or contractor to do that. That's where you might, if you're looking for a separate HR person, say, yes, in addition to the day-to-day paperwork, we want you to work on rewriting bylaws or updating bylaws, that's where I would look for the separate person. Finance is key. Project management is key, because there are some selectmen who have a lot of projects they left. That takes a certain skill set and patience. I think the person needs to be able to relate to and listen to employees and the public. I think an open door policy where employees get the public to come in and talk to the town administrator should be a key piece. Some of that is just personality, if you get somebody who's really good at numbers, that you might get some great spreadsheets and help come budgeting time. But they are sometimes totally cold and closed to talking to the public and dealing with, with the human side of things. Wouldn't want the idea to hire a separate HR director from the town administrator, like, well, then I don't have to worry about talking to employees and
Uh, yeah.
Working those things.
Right.
As far as requirement of being a town administrator, I'm a little sensitive because, you know, I, for many years I tried to get into the town administrator business, and people said, you must be one before you, you can be hired. Sterling is able to make the choice or the risk to do that. If you've got someone who can help train or coach or mentor, and has some municipal experience, but not have been a town administrator, might be good, because then you can shape them the way you want to.
Right.
I'm always concerned about getting someone who's going from town to town and is gonna come in with all their habits and processes that may not fit towns.
Right.
Certain point, it's, it's getting the town administrator to fit into towns versus towns that fit their town administration.
Right. And I, and I guess I feel like someone who hasn't been sitting in that chair has a better, would be more uh, more willing to
Well, if they can be molded to the way you want them to work, um it may take more coaching and handling, or have someone for them, you know, a friend for them, phone a friend. That's sort of what I'm doing for Conway, which they hired very qualified person, but had not been a town administrator. So we overlapped for two months, and she knows that she can call me with a question.
Right.
Depending on my time schedule here, you know, I'm sort of envisioning helping them with their budgets, because that's something she hasn't done.
Right.
Same arrangement, I hate to say that I'm adding, extending my contract here. But we could even work it, work that out too, or just someone they can call. Sometimes having a sounding board is all it takes.
Right.
But I think that is a big decision question. Must have been a town administrator or willing to accept somebody with all right skills.
Well, I believe that, and somebody that needs to have some sort of education in public administration, I think that's really important. And I think they need to have a minimum of some kind of years um with progressive experience in senior positions in municipal administration, I think that's really important.
I, I like that, senior position. So what are you thinking about?
So years of management experience, um combination of education and experience.
I, I think the education case is required, at, at least the BA level.
Public administration.
Public administration, I would go with planning, I would go with um uh, I don't know, I mean, that's not my side of things, but public administration, uh planning would work. Maybe human resources would work, maybe, I don't know. Business administration might work.
But that would be, and that's what I'm trying to, I think we need to find somebody strong with numbers. It's just my opinion.
I
I mean, numbers is, is, and budgets is a huge part of this.
Yeah.
It's, 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 it's actually, it's all of those, I mean, it's, it's numbers, it's numbers, it's, it's personnel. HR, it's project management.
So what I'm saying is that I wouldn't, if somebody had a degree in accounting, but also had experience in, in public administration in senior position.
Then I, I would consider that, depending on what it looked like.
Right. So I don't want to just narrow it down to a field of, you know what I mean?
Okay, minimum bachelor's degree. Okay, masters preferred and all the things we just said. With progressive senior positions in municipal settings. Serving on boards or committees in the town that they live in is a plus. They need to have project management background, finance background, and be able to relate to and listen to employees and maintain an open door policy. And then if you go with years, minimum five, minimum eight, minimum ten. We want an old person or do we want a young person? Big and old person?
Keep long two weeks, so you're not gonna specify.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I, depending on what that experience is, three to five years can be, I think eight to ten might be too long.
Right.
A, a new person that has got the energy that you can shape in the direction you want. A new person that has got the energy that you can shape in the direction you want versus they're not going to tell you what they're not going to do, or...
Right.
I know a lot of, I wouldn't put it a residency requirement, but being close, I think, has a benefit. It's a long day anyway, you don't need to add a lot to do to it.
Lives within a 30-mile radius.
It's nice to be able to show up for other activities on nights or weekends, and not feel like driving two hours to do that. So I think being able to be visible in the community.
Maybe say it that way, or lives within, you know, willing to relocate to...
Well, maybe it's just able to be visible to the community.
Yeah.
And if they want to drive that, okay, but I think when you're interviewing them, they tell you that they're an hour or quarter away, you want to ask a few more questions.
Right.
I mean, I've known some town administrators that take apart.
Yes.
Person that's crazy, but... Or, it's like, I will stay at hotels.
Well, that won't work here.
Well, and, and you can do that type of stuff short-term. In my case, I stayed in a hotel.
Right, but you weren't interviewed.
But it was meant to be three months.
Hotel and fun?
Well, it's actually in South Deerfield. But for three months, since, that was almost fun. I can't stand doing that for multiple years.
Right.
So I think able to be visible in the community. I'd term it that as attending, you know, various board night meetings, and public events, it might be actually, those weekends.
You think that's enough guidance? If you want more guidance.
Well, I kind of liked the, the Boxborough one, where it broke it down into knowledgeability and skills.
Okay. I had a Oh, system loss.
Yes, it's a, it's a PC.
Why not? I just hit the button that I normally would have had, and different things happen. Oh my goodness.
It's the ability one that... Oh my.
Yeah.
I didn't realize it was that way. No, it's 11:07, that clock is not turned out.
Yeah, but still, I wanted to be down in the... All right, do we need tactics to continue?
The ability to write clear and concise reports, memoranda, directives, letters, and other documentation, ability to develop comprehensive plans, general instructions, ability to accomplish assigned administrative tasks with a minimum of supervision, and with only general directions, ability to bring people together around complex goals, and develop conscientious consensus among community groups and individuals that may not share common properties, ability to establish and maintain harmonious and effective working relationships, and deal appropriately with employees, board of selectmen, committee members, agencies, and officials, media, and the public. I liked everything in that abilities.
Thank you, that. I don't disagree with any of those.
Ability to prioritize and manage multiple tasks and shift priorities as needed, ability to be flexible and to deal with emergencies.
Did you read these?
Yes.
Are they gluten-free?
No.
They're not? Can't have one.
But they look gorgeous.
I'll take yours. Go ahead, keep reading.
It has a coconut white.
Oh, is that, that's the right coconut palm? Oh, cool.
Ability to negotiate contracts, agreements, and appropriate working arrangements, ability to deal tactfully with disgruntled members of the public and town staff, ability to communicate management goals to all departments, ability to make decisions based on standards set by the board of selectmen.
But would we put that in the job posting? I'm talking about, I agree with all of that, but I would not put those in the job posting.
Recommended minimum qualifications. That's how Boxborough probably would.
Did they?
Yep.
In their posting? How many people have they gotten to apply?
Feel free to ask me a question, I can answer.
See, here's my thought on this. In a posting, you put as little as possible. You can put that in the job description.
Okay.
But for me, at least, when I see a job posting that has all these little things, or things that you want, but you say, "I'm not going to apply, because I can't do, this is me." This is a lot. But if it were in the job description, I would fill that.
So you're saying, put that in the job?
End all on this, trust me.
Put it in the job description as opposed to the...
Mm-hmm, the posting.
Yeah. No, I, and I would think that this was an end all that we thought. I just wanted to be able to...
Be honest?
Yeah, and be specific. I mean, Ross, what's your thoughts on the posting? Well, I mean, to me, a job posting is point you to the job description.
Yeah, it should be short. I mean, one, it saves you money, versus, thank you for both, but it should be short, have the key features. I would put in a salary range, because I think we'll be in or out, based, you know, based on what they think it's going to get.
Yeah.
Have we thought about the salary?
No, we haven't talked about it.
You thought about it, the committee? Then come up around?
No, because the thought was that you, the, the selectmen will give them the job description in, in the posting, and then they'll do all the, the search work. So the, the thought to, at least, I took it this way, is that it's the purview of the selectmen to come up with a job description and posting, and then they'll find the individuals to fit with the selectmen they're looking for. So I, I'm in agreement with Ross. I want to keep it simple and, and direct it to the point. It's the job description that that I think...
I think most job descriptions are pretty generic, you know, from town to, from town to town. Maybe to use the job description, or at least the header, things to want to focus on. End up saying you want everything, which is fine.
Yeah, and then you have a review process to get it made up. So, I mean, that's, that's traditionally how it's created. I think we should come up with a salary range.
Okay.
The fact that we're looking, I mean, short and sweet, this is what we're looking for, a town administrator per the our, our bylaws and charter.
Okay.
That is all part of the job description, I would assume. Give them direction on where the bylaws are found and where the charter is found.
Yes, because anyone's worth their salt, will check those on their own, absolutely. Probably link us on the site, it's on the web page, and we'll hunt for it.
Yeah. The salary range, and what we're looking for. The hours that we're looking for. Does that matter?
Well, well, we need to say full-time. You can say it's full-time. I wouldn't put in hours, because if you can say it's a 40-hour-a-week job, I don't think it is. I think it's 50 or more. And you don't want someone thinking, okay, it's four o'clock, I'm walking out.
Right.
Success.
What I'm saying is, it's, we would word it a full-time salary position.
Yes.
Yeah, that kind of stuff. The... I think we put, like, a minimum criteria in it. Bachelor's degree, that kind of stuff.
I guess, like, you don't want someone showing up just...
Well, I mean, the first...
Minimum should, minimum should be, I mean, I think the education will end up speaking for itself, but the minimum should be X years of municipal experience with aggressively, aggressive management. You want someone who knows how inside town hall works. You don't want someone who runs their whole private business and says, oh, I can do this.
Right.
Because we don't know that would work. It's just...
So how many years is enough years? What's the X? I would just go with five. But you're right, three, three might do it.
Well, you don't put that as a minimum criteria, except, you know, what if it's somebody with five years of municipal experience? Or...
We progressively overset it, you know.
Or the usual combination of work and education experience. You're not, or if you take someone who's got three years of experience, you think is a good one.
I want you to put in the bachelor's. Okay, all right. And then with...
MBA or Masters in Public Administration, sure.
Yeah.
If I had the MBA, I didn't have the Masters of Public Administration.
Right. So we could do that. MBA, or a Masters in Public Administration preferred, but BA minimum. And then combination.
Five years of municipal work experience and education, or something. That works.
Okay.
Am I writing this up?
Yes, you are.
Looking at me that way?
Yes, you are.
Wow, gotcha.
I did the land use coordinator, the grant administrator. You got the TA person.
Nah, I couldn't do it.
See, we're another person picking up on your, your visual clues.
I have more experience in that.
Yeah.
That's right.
You've probably been trained.
We were on planning board for a couple of years together.
And you also probably have been professionally trained on that.
Yes, like the boot in the ankle many times.
Yeah, I've sticked it up for 49 years of marriage, so somebody might say, someone might say, I still haven't picked it up, so...
So a BA required MBA, or what, what was that, Ross? Or Masters in Business Administration?
Well, the MBA, yes, and, and/or Masters in Public Administration. Items that Joe had said to me were along the line, let's just say, professional knowledge of municipal sector, respect for and respect of employees, good work ethics.
Those would be all in the job description.
He was okay with somebody who did not specifically have town administrator experience. Want somebody who will work with the select board. MCPPO.
What's that?
That's the Massachusetts Chief Recruitment Officer.
Already certified or willing to take?
So I would put in familiar or knowledgeable with Massachusetts Department of law. MCPPO certification preferred.
Okay, yeah, that's good. Should that be in the posting, though?
Yeah.
I think so. We're gonna...
Well, what they do in my profession, profession, if they're looking for specific certification, they would say that they want the certification or the ability to be certified within the certificated time. Okay with that?
Yes.
But I would still put familiar with Massachusetts Department of Law. And the certification can come after that, if necessary.
Right.
Joe had it, open-minded. Knowledge guide for the selectmen. And he was interested, I think, in the search committee doing the reference checks and providing a rank list. Don't know how Veronica feels about that.
I thought that's what, oh, I, no, ranked, I didn't want a ranked list. You can rank the list, but I didn't want to see that. You see, I, I mean, I, I would rather see it after we looked and interviewed. Then I would take that into consideration.
I think the, the, they would find, I mean, from the talk, I, I got the impression that it was they're going to find three candidates and submit them to the board of selectmen. Non-ranked, non-ranked, just, these are our recommendations.
I would prefer that. But I...
And you'd like the search committee to do their reference checks before they give you the credentials?
Yes.
Let's stop the board from doing their own checks, but...
Right.
And Veronica, something you mentioned last year, you'd say active in their community.
That's, yes. That's my served on boards are committees within their community. I think that's important. To me, it shows an investment in in the town that you live in. I, I just, I don't know.
Well, it is good, I think you also get more experience as just to how other boards and committees run, because you've been on them.
Right.
Must have had active community involvement.
Yeah. I, I also think that...
As a must or preferred?
Preferred. I, I guess a must is a little, but to me, it shows that when you come to this community, you're going to have that same outlook on things. You'll be involved. It's the being involved in the community thing. You'll be more invested, or you're, you're more likely to invest yourself in the community that you're in, if you've already invested yourself in the community in which you live.
So... So. I will write up both the posting and and my thoughts on the job description. Everybody will put their comments in in regards to the job description and the posting. And then we are, we've invited them, which is probably going to be me, to the sixteenth.
Oh, they can't come?
Some can, some can, I haven't, I don't, I haven't.
Even, I mean, it has an "how" piece to it.
No, I understand that, I'm just saying, it's weird, they're not gonna, we're not going to have another meeting until we figure out what the.
Okay.
But it's an understanding that the sixteenth, if they can't make it, they can't make it.
All right.
I think only one individual said that they may not be able to make the sixteenth.
Okay.
Um, so between now and the sixteenth, then the selectmen will have time to be able to. Um. Look at, review this and and say that we can have a decision for them so that we can give them the job description and posting on the sixteenth.
Yes. And then as long as they're good with that, which they should be, within this post.
That's the goal, that's what I was hoping you could do.
Okay. Okay, so you're going to write it up?
Yep.
Put it in the shareboard, we'll grab it, we'll make our comments and bring them to the meeting on the sixteenth for discussion?
Correct. Did you? Have a salary range or?
I was trying to drop that, didn't. Um.
In our um BOSS agenda minutes correspondence, I created a folder that's to your search committee. And in that, I have a folder for the job descriptions and. I'll be putting them in there.
Okay.
In that folder.
That sounds good. Okay. So you'll write one that says TA Townsend?
Yeah, I'll do Townsend TA.
And it won't be a PDF?
No, it'll be a Word.
Okay, sure.
You know, I I feel standard should be that we do everything in Word and then when we're ready, we do a PDF, which is the final.
Okay.
Because that's the one we'd have to post.
Okay, sounds good.
This should be universal for all of our documents, quite honestly.
Okay, so are you going to put a job description and a posting in this?
Yeah.
Then we're good. All right, so. My next meeting is November sixteenth at six PM, and this will be on that agenda. And then November twenty second at nine AM is the next for the park stuff.
Correct.
I hope that we turn.
Oh.
Eleven twenty seven.
Is there a second? Yes, me, second. All right, others in favor?
Yes, there's a cinderanian, yes.
Veronica, yes. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.